Today is the seventh of January, twenty twenty one. And we want for say happy birthday to the mayor of Freetown, Yvon Akisoya. And today, I in case back would he deal with? We remember not too long ago, the mayor and the Minister of Land then be get some issue over land. I didn't know more than go meet up notice so. But I don't know if you remember the story fine. The Minister of Land being vexed because the mayor be stop one project where be they go on under that bridge than Lumley. So what in the Minister of Land be do after that? Instead go find one part the mayor in waste management projects away defeat sponsored project. He go, he go and sack a broke broke replace. So now so the team no more just be hang by the old tune. The mayor and the Minister of Land, everybody come they explain the own. But today, a different thing now wale na table. Because Minister of Land look don't do the right thing. You know, at twenty twenty one oh, some time oh, the minister eh, at the right way they do things now. Eh? You have for believe say, say the minister na change man for this year. But we can't look into this one because if Palava be in there, broke broke be in there, we can't help, we make a program on them, we talk on them. I think so what the team don't come up fine now, we no talk on them oh. But we can hear he how the minister put them and how the two the mayor self putting on. But before that, make we give the status update for Covid nineteen for today na saloon. The labs them analyze four hundred and ninety-two test them. Now in the labs they analyze, four hundred and ninety-two test them. Out of that four hundred and ninety-two test then they, eighteen turnout for be positive. Out of the eighteen, western area urban get sixteen and the inbound passengers them get two. Inbound passengers get two, western area urban get sixteen. Hmm? Okay. Go, they go so small small. Inbound passengers now don't get seventy-three. Because of that eighteen new cases day, the confirmed positive cases down na saloon don't reach two thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven. Unfortunately, we don't lost one person today to Covid nineteen. We pray say the soul of that person day and all the other people lemoh don't lost to Covid nineteen rest in peace. So because of that one person day where we lost, the total number of people lemoh we we don't lost now to Covid nineteen na seventy-seven. We active new ca- we active cases then at isolation center don't reach seven hundred and seven. Seven hundred and seven. Cumulative recoveries. Because of today, forty-four people lemoh recover from Covid nineteen na saloon. The cumulative recoveries don't reach one thousand nine hundred and seventy-three. They want them who they in quarantine na four hundred and eighty-two. They want them who done discharge from quarantine na twelve thousand five hundred and eighty-one. Let we check with Mano River Union countries them. The new cases then for today at the Mano River Union countries them. Sierra Leone, eighteen, just like I announced. But today, the Mano River Union countries then say let's Sierra Leone no mix the outside then they. Today na saloon no more, na then get positive case. Guinea, zero. Liberia, zero. Ivory Coast, zero. So, saloon, na we no more, na we get positive case for today. Remember I promise we yesterday say, I go check what in they go on na Liberia. And I did, I promise we, I tell we say people lemoh day we, we get affiliation with here and let to get affiliation with, I mean journalist then na Liberia. So as I dey done yesterday na ya, I contact one of we journalist affiliate behold Elijah na Liberia. I give for ask him I say, we don't de follow Liberia, but we no know what in they go on. I say you can able to help we for make we know how unai de get in zero 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 ya. I say so when was the last time unai record a positive case? It tell me say the last time wouldn't be record any case na be December eighteen two thou- twenty twenty. December eighteen, two thousand and twenty. From that endi, three to today, Liberia no record no case. I say okay. So, for right now, then still get two hundred and ninety cases. Two hundred and ninety cases where then at treatment center. So he begin for share with me the National Public Health Institute of Liberia. Like they own Nakovak. So I say, okay, make I check them out. I check they out na Facebook. I see say from the eighteen where they last record case, we then get update, they no get update again three today. I say, okay, well, make I dig more until I don't put myself into this. Make I go na this National Institute, their website. Well, la one day, their website in the down. You know they work. Eh? I have kick and I have kick ah. And he say no more is a bit but pass we begin for watch other man on. Now say, okay, well, make I check the Ministry of Health na Liberia, their website. Indeed, the Ministry of Health na Liberia, their website, they up and running. And the last update we then save get na the website, na the last one when I be December eighteen. After that, no Covid update, no didi. Hmm? No Covid update, no didi. I say, okay, well, at least I be promise I go find out. I do me work, I contact journalist affiliate with it day. He tell we what he get for tell we, then I go to the extent, check their website, go on their Facebook page and everything. So I don't know this zero now who they get for Liberia. If you have to go zero or na tire they don't tire for reports. Now they make myself they think otherwise. Eh? Because at least, if na they get zero say, unavo they tell we how many testo na they do per day. Eh? How many? Because if not, hmm, this one like you say, a whole world. But anyway, for today, na saloon no more na he register the Mano River Union. I don't know something oh no be get the memo for say today na the zero. All man for announce zero for today, we no get the memo say, ah ah, we'll get eighteen. Eh? Okay, cumulative death like I be announced, saloon da add one person, seventy-seven, Guinea eighty-one, Liberia eighty-three, Ivory Coast one hundred and thirty-eight. With a total of three hundred and seventy-nine people where the Mano River Union countries them done lost to Covid nineteen. Hmm? Hmm. At the talk I say, you say how's you? We no test, no information on test, no website info. And make I say Liberia, yeah. Ah. Even na their Facebook page, um, I think the term I be check like five hours to that December eighteen. But somebody be coming today like five hours ago to the tell me be check say, wait to, what in they go on? Unai no they give we update again, unai no they tell we nothing. Even wa go na WHO, na zero na in the day back for Liberia. Like, boy, I be, I don't know, my man. And they give them the my man style like, eh, who don't give, ah, who keep everything to be safe. Hmm, okay. But sa la one they then give we. Hmm. Alright. I do me work notice so. I do me work oh. Let we can out to today on topic. Land Minister allocate pieces of lands to Freetown City Council for Waste Management. And the same land minister where be go broke first. Usai Freetown City Council call say, he say na state land. How can I ah? Say, the land minister, ah, you name for say, I think he likely name they play. So can I ah, we talk? So now so the land minister do, he go, he go broke. Defeat sponsored, eh, defeat funded project, he go broke him. It's now who can say, wash your dirty linens at home, ah ah. Eh? Ah ah, and they wash them out. Because definitely I know say those partners they don't know say, this is what in the land ministry do. And then sign, but the day, everything the day at that time, eh, no be care, eh, broke ah. Because the mayor stop person where instead make he go bin na water we. So instead should say he getting own power. But this time around, you see the picture eh? They all didi, development partners, they all, and then team up so. Na state land. You think say he give eh? Bet I think he give. Eh, they give oh, ah. The minister no they give. No mix. But anyway, we cannot talk for him. And the mayor on birthday, let we listen how this thing be take place, ya?
Waste management control don't be CEO's challenge for Freetown City Council. Way expensive for keep the city clean and for make them get enough space outside they go use as waste management site them. Freetown City Council, who the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. They make request to the Ministry of Lands, outside they ask for land them. Where the Ministry for list to them, where they go use as site for the waste management project. And as the Ministry of Lands, Housing and Conti Planning don't get to give land site where they go list to Freetown City Council.
Yeah, yeah, where they go list, not to give oh. Ah ah, government no they give, government at least they list to FCC. But governments get older than King Geland, let we continue ah.
The Minister of Lands, Dr Denis Sande, don't go and over documents them for three land sites them for the transfer station of waste management to the Freetown City Council.
We are all in for development and what we have been seeing here is that when it comes to matters that really have the possibility of move this country forward. We just need to follow simple processes and procedures.
We all day in for development. But what in matter, where it come to, then kind thing there ya, we need for follow processes and procedures. I what in the Minister of Lands say, no to me talk for her. Because at that time we go bugo kianda, he say FCC no follow the required procedure. So now I make he talk and I ah now say, we all day in for development, but remember how the development partners then be didi. So I thinking instead we go give for clear in your name. But let we continue.
That has been done. On behalf of my ministry, I'm pleased to present three important land documents, both the site plan indicating the different acres of the land in question and then the letter of offer, which of course is the most important, signed by me to my colleague here, the Minister of Planning and Economic Development for honoured presentation to the Minister of Local Government and then probably for eventual submission.
Dr Denis Sande talked this into our meeting with representative them from the Freetown City Council, Ministry of Planning and Economic Development, INGO, Ministry of Lands and Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development. Outside it talk about the different side them, where they give council for the waste management sites and say because of the importance of this project, where council need the land them for, this make they reduce the list cost and other thing them.
And because of the importance, we have attached to this all important project. This is why we actually, you know, brought down the fees a bit because the land is going to be list to the Freetown City Council. Normally, this will have paid about fifty million leons. But because of the nature of the project, it's just three million leons, which is nothing, honestly, as far as we know.
Eh? Who eh, Denis? But no clap for Rambo. Yes, no clap for her. He said because what in give them so, what he list to them, no to give oh, what he list to them so for don't cost like fifty million leons. But because the development and Freetown City Council, the Kanaba project and whatever, whatever, he make him for three million leos. Kudos, Mister Land Minister, you don't try. You remember na ya, we don't talk but, na ya where they say that it's guy for de politicize the mayors them notice so. And inside the, the local government say the main reason where then they do that and they for, so that the government in your agenda, na in the mayors then, then go follow. They say but when the mayors then can they on the political party, they not able for do what in the government wants them for do. Just watch this slightly. This particular one, the mayor, he be done they run with in project. Where instead don't do for make one kind way, let he able get this. He done they run with him, they go. Then, he reach na the water low. When he able cross, everything come to he stand still. Outside end up can now. He end up come back to the local government because that through them, he write for say he need so soon so land them. He dey take notice eh? Let we continue.
From the angle of the Freetown City Council, here, we got their letter on the fifteenth of December, twenty twenty and then wasted no time to react. The letter of offer here. This is for the state land of Freetown Road Lumley, measuring about zero point four eight six zero acres. And then for a fee of three million leons per year and then for an initial list period of fifteen good years, which is very important because we have stretched out this time so that we can all be partners in.
Do ya? Waste management, they give for go put to dirty box and make him in a way way. Now they then go to collect for that entire um neighborhood, and now they then go for to collect the dirty them. For fifteen years, now in the list and to FCC for fifteen years. Now who the gombo say, say no they for to go away dirty, say no they for to go dirty. Freetown City Council take them fine place. Say this place he go find oh for make we use them for collect. Dirty we use them for manage we waste them. Where they don't go take and ah, then when they don't go take and the old man don't go take, we able for manage and ah. And say no, no to forever. Unai de pay three million for use the land because what in unna state land. In fact, ah fifty million say unna for don't they pay for here. But unna go pay the three million because unna na FCC. And no angu unna one year, two year, so what we go do, we go stretch on to fifteen years. Make unna didi for fifteen years. Eh? Let we continue.
Development regarding waste management. So here we have some four hundred fifty thousand leos. And then we have here quite clearly now, the site plan, very important, indicating the extent of the acreage of the land in question. Have go down for all main motor road island town, the same conditions applied. The land is to be utilized to construct a state of the art transfer station that will enhance waste collection and management in the western area.
Don't forget to, because don't know who ka ya is on thing on the road. State of the art waste collection, hey? Hey, state of the art waste collection, I need the gear for. So if you want go make state of science or state of biology or state of commerce or state of account, you know in a art. In Sierra Leone, we get, we get game. But na state of the art waste collection management project, na if for duty. Because that for tomorrow, where Dr Denis Sande go go for go bugo conjunction, say no to state of the art. He don't give any site plan. Outside the land get for use reach and outside no get for use reach. Hmm? Now listen, Ambo.
Final one here now is for Jumu Kenyatta Road, New England. Again, this is about zero point one seven four four acres, the same conditions attached.
Inside a young talk from the Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development, where directly they supervise and monitor council the work. The minister Tambalamina say na serving transit station they need for addressed waste management na Freetown.
These transit stations are very important for our development, especially waste management in the city. We are also very knowledgeable of the fact that there will be seven transit stations.
We are very knowledgeable about the fact. Because what the mayor, you go and make like if I say na he sabi old thing. Now I make the Minister of Local Government Tambalamina, they tell and say, they are very knowledgeable about the fact say, na seven transfer stations them. And don't forget, it has to be state of the art. Outside they go pull the art, the man no sabi. But let we continue.
And all in different parts of Freetown. And we are happy as a government to continue to support that and to work with Freetown City Council in making this project come to reality.
Where eh they talk, I worship the mayor for the Freetown city. Yvon Akisoya say, the waste management sites are where they need for they dump the different dirty them working commodities in the city are part of the Transform Freetown program.
This is as Minister of Local Government said, this is one of seven transfer stations. And these transfer stations, just so everyone is clear, part of the Transform Freetown Agenda and Sanitation.
Hey, old man they fat na, just, ju- just listen bar big. Because some of who no key they understand. Yeah, he wa explain to you just now, what in the Minister of Land say. Yeah, he wa explain to you, what in the local government minister say Tambalamina. Now the mayor they say, he say just so that we all clear na ya. This particular one, na part of Transform Freetown, who da get our agenda day? That's na the mayor in your agenda. Hey, power. Old man give for show on on, ah, for, for, for we, na for we the people, for please we, or na for what in? But he say na part of him, in agenda, the Transform Freetown, and we all no say yes, na in agenda, that one day. Na in program, na he, he, he dey work out with him, he dey run with him, he dey fly with him, he dey sleep with him. Let we continue for listen with the mayor.
Target is to increase solid waste collection, uh, management and safe disposal from twenty-one percent as it was in twenty eighteen to at least sixty percent by twenty twenty-two.
Yvon Akisoya explained what the different division of the waste management sites them.
Um, so we divided the city of Freetown into eight block, so.
They divide Freetown city to eight blocks. We call that force side, yeah, he what in the land minister say. But you want then they hand over this land to now, let we listen to what in in they say. Because down the road, we no go one just now, let some miss understand the guy inside. Ah, let we listen to the mayor ya, he, he dey explain fine. What in the inside that Transform Free Town agenda for the seven transfer stations ya, now so it look like.
Forty-eight wards, eight blocks. Six wards comprise a block and each block is to have a transfer station. So this project goes hand in glove with the tricycle infrastructure where we're having household waste collected. Our experience of recent years has been if the tricycles have to go for miles, they break down easily. And additionally, they can collect from fewer households because the time it takes them to travel, they could have used to deposit and then pick up more garbage. So the transfer stations provide a transfer for waste. It's a stopping point.
The mayor for the Freetown City Council, Yvon Akisoya, end say, with the support from the Ministry of Lands, Ministry of Local Government and Rural Development and Ministry of Planning and Economic Development, that go make they able for addressed waste management and make the city clean all term. For the Society for Radio Democracy, me na Sabtiu Kalon.
One for tell Sabtiu Kalon, thank you, and Radio Democracy, when I through them, me you able for listen what you listen to so. Seven transfer stations then, for gather waste management. For make transfer stations where, who unna get in there, who unna can drop, na anyone then they can't take, then kegoy and ah, everybody get in work. But if I be state of the art, if not ultra modern. Hmm? Not to look Bomeo, Bomeo no to state of the art. I see somebody, they ask if na, na another Bomeo, they cancel, hey? Yeah, he would and say state of the art. Bomeo no to state of the art too. Bomeo na state of dirty. Bomeo in a state of dirty, then where ya give for be state of the art. Hmm hmm. So na two different one then. But what you they say na ya? We don't hear eh, Palava be in there. Palava no there again. But however, the Ministry of Lands, they no give, Freetown City Council, they land. They listen to them. They listen to them for fifteen years. Fifteen good years then they listen. And I say if I be cost they even fifty million leos per year. But because the FCC, the Land Ministry and the local government ministers who like the FCC, so they just, they reduce some for them, for just three million, no more every year. Let's say in a business eh? Hey? But no to state of Bomeo, no to state of dirty, this na state of the art transfer stations. Make we come with Usfend, make we hear eh, what in he get for we today? Yes, Usfend, you get the platform, sir.
Yeah, hello, Trip Bulle, thank you very much for giving the platform and thanks to all who listeners and viewers here. Um, the issue about this land in the mayor, in business with the land, ma- ma- the land minister table to the other man, we be part of him. Um, I think say, na just a matter of competition, they try for go on. But it look like. But it look like say the mayor initiative, na maybe we don't de, we, na maybe don't de before, who we don't know say, we don't get some evil substantial. Um, he look at by local action. Na in the mayor be the try for look at, the local action, how the local action will impact the environment, the climate change, because all the one they be the plan, I'm wanting na how UNDP visit and so on. She will try for money, uh, 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 try for lobby around, and some of the lobbying, they, 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 they project something. So obviously, how the global, it will get impact from the globe, in order was waste management and they will for put action. And they manage this waste ma- demand, this waste here properly, go help both in terms of um, um, global impact, terms of the weather, reduce that carbon footprint, and secondly, then they also try for help the, a lot of people, um, we in terms of migration. And then now you talk of the refugees and other programs, this is the project we actually the mayor put down. And he put this project based on the project where they caption as Mayor's Migration Council. So this now, another bodies, there are more than other council, then they about five nations, five country there. So the mayors they involve, even inside New York, they get a place where now Buffalo, inside New York, yes, they get a problem there. So this is part of the project, but coming back to we own local area now. Within the mayor don't receive present, like you don't need lobby for long, you don't get infrastructure, some of them, you don't need put in labor, some of them, they give you don't bring your time, the bikes, you don't bring, you don't, you don't bring in even the recycle program, who UNDP been, 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 train some people eh after recycling plastic into things, you get a projects that we don't put now aside. So where now the people they were able for employ them and make a bigger scale, that was his project we been around. So in lucky for get a donation, we just land to him and recently through this global um, this global city fund, who now one million. I mean, uh, uh, well, they say, um, 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 they, they no fund a hundred, hundred, uh, yes, now one million dollars, yeah, not one hundred. Now one million US dollars, na na the first initiative, so they able for respond, for support the migrant, refugee internally displaced. So the program now don't get a hit. So you go put on one side, that is one thing, they come out to the minister, he goes, okay, if you only get and she, um, block, loggy hairs, the premier, the mayor, and so on and so forth. Then you go see now, there is something would substantial, would the mayor, they step up, they step up. And you get about defeat on the other side, would they help us or say we don't go. So you will be questions, you know, why this man go responding, that we make easy, say, okay, I would do, I would not pay three million, even though they listen and they would let loose, they go at this land here, wait, if they don't do for long, and then we don't know, as he said, and where I seen, I didn't see, I be don't do. When the mayor be they do. And back up with that, the Russians, they don't can give, but who vehicles and now, would they look bulky again? So that they will even help for more from them, it is, uh, what they call the sub-site station then. Who that is dirty, we got collect, then they move out, we send them over now, in terms of waste management, because the waste management, the mayor only just try for throw away. There is a stage, what is there to try for employee there by using some na compost, some we go use for gas, then some we go use some of the waste there for recycling to different things. So the hundred, the one million US dollar don't come to this global city funds, it don't come, it don't project so much. So it obvious now, most likely, you can't see now because of now, under the land, the sand demand, they get for respond easily. You will see number one, there might have been something, because just like a tree growing, sometimes you go cut the branch, but it's still growing. But if you not cut the roots, it's difficult, but here there is no root cause, it was just say, the, the, the tree they big more, it a big more, so there is no way again, you move to a point you go say, yeah, I can't do this, all I get for do maybe I go just try for now, I help for that, this space, let it fertilize, they have to grow. All right, and let it see I go grow well, and it is really stick here, but the, the, the other one you have now for bring guys that in the try, in most likely, you go say, you don't see, all this is coming. And this is, there is no way for me go stop her, and if I continue for resist this, then they go look at the government say, they not only for there, they get global program. There's some of these programs are done with combination, you get United Nation High Commissioner for Refugees. And you see, the United Nation, they get a meeting, which was very strange, like yesterday, they hold a meeting, which is the sixth of January. Why they hold a non-no, but the first topic when they had a meeting, they, na about how they will settle Africa their problems, they bring all these issues there. So now was, if this are the project, they only come inside now, and just, then, then they change a little strategy, I mean, they can inside. Even though they still get laughs, then they say, they try for still get the old fat time, would have been on the guest, but in order adapt. You see? So now in the coming from when the, the, the way, when they don't get in plant for say, this way will follow, will dissolve out, it can't dissolve it. So that's why I was just saying, they don't let go for give the land to the mayor, even though they say, oh, well, we will still, we will still pay this. But you go find out, see, a slow reaction. Now only because they don't see, maybe this why you go question, say, maybe they don't see as a projection, we can't stop. And then there is no way, this involve this, involve this. If the president, he speak for global climate, to see on other thing, they cannot these things. So there's a go see, oh, I don't talk to this, so if we not do this, this na ya, it will reflect. So sometimes they are, they are responding to things which are pressure, where it may sometimes the pressure it down for like, it will change a positive way. And these are the areas, they only pray God, where some of the chains in a salon, they go come in those form, where there is no way, like a health, loss, health come for the health. There is no way the person will stop him. Just like this was to bring about, eh, eh, before, and then for years, for a long time ago. But the people already send for what go on, they less ready, they do his project, which is the center of ABC and for end and now, something wrong with the immigration, a cottage, they and a corrot, they they still go before. For this are the project, where they come inside, and the help of them, with the, they call man, Jacob, when they tell the old thank you, because they only work, work with the mayor. And then the lady where they head this year, all we actually give this money, I think it's in a US base, they call them Tories and also, when I white US lady. But the idea was like for talking on, I have to say, some projects are coming, based on the way, where you don't implement the project, the ideology, then you go get people who will come on board. And this is what exactly the ideology don't come, where in the mayor, I see from what he had just observed, I know they seen that that they be, but from me on perception, based on seeing the trend of things. Because if it differs with all the project, we produce a program for the mayor under, they demand, just because they go stop, and I say, go react. And maybe, you not even know, who we are diffing, in the way we go understand them, maybe all even just concentrate on you what. But I believe say, you know, because nine hundred, he did a parliament, or maybe it's not related to the, the, the area, who are diffing with the help. So those have applied themselves, but I'm therefore talking on, or sometimes they get for just be open, sit together, make ideas, let it go before. Instead of that one they come, he bring you idea, he, he draw you under, and it brings you idea, let us sit at the table, let's see, if some of this project, then they bring it well, because the mayor go employ people eh. I'm going to say at the best of it, then the mayor back go, go able for help recycling of some of the waste. And then there is more to come in terms of helping the people, and because of urban migration, and the traffic will reduce. And the people, they want a refugee, and they are, they want to, it's like displaced people eh. So if United Nation and the High Commissioner for Refugees and other organization, the UN Migration, and they put this money they can give. So obviously, the project, it only begin go before. Not to the best of it, but it's up to how they say good, fairly implement, and but there has been something where a substance, who we don't deal in now. So all they try for do now, for just project eh, so it will, it will for help, because pandemic respond, ready to try for avoid back all those factors, we look on more, all what is inside the pocket. Any pandemic, they therefore avoid, anything where they come inside, apart from this pandemic, we don't come now, so we call, the pandemic, we don't come, then they also avoid other previous season where they see, now other one, they will cause local, uh, no local one, so that you know what affects the other country then. Now for that, they see na local action, who were able for bring a global impact. Because if one side, one side, no, 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 no better, the other side will accept, if the other side eh, it gets a problem, they say no say, the climate, it, it, it affect. Because when the air they blow, it blow down, for go up, it go more up, it can't down, when you come up from door, it can't open, eh, eh, we can see all the places warm, like the next week. Because the, eh, eh, lift from, from that side, eh, they can't pop, then when you eat, the cold come up, not like Canada, they see, that's it, when you get the winter, when you get a cold, they, they begin freeze. So that's how life they go, and I want to get a try for equal, for see them able for help, and that's a good, that's we as, we as, we for confront, this chair they push on our table. And thank you very much for giving the platform, and I say happy birthday to Ramback, and happy birthday to Janet, and thanks to Able Doctor, who do a very good job there in um, um, twenty twenty Jones, they all. Thank them all for all their effort, what they do, they go continue for healthy and continue for prosper, we thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much, Usfriend.
Yeah, most welcome, sir.
If you be watch earlier today, you will see donation we SIA Network Charity Foundation do. We do about three different donations, then today na salon. Um, we get Dr. Isatuka Kijalo, we get the SIA Network Media Team, and we also get Tony Ture Jones, when he serve currently de na salon. But no worry, every time when doctor in come, he go can give we all the update on Saturday, I believe. Where he come, he go can give all the update, because he gets a little busy with SIA Network work right now, na salon day. Um, uh. A lot of things that we see on Network, they push right now, but like I said, we come, he go can update we. So we come back to FCC and the Ministry of Lands. You there eh, within we don't get from the one they were involved. Within a young tick. Yes, Cola, you live on here, you name and who say the call from, please?
Yeah, I don't know PSG.
Yes, PSG, get three minutes, sir.
Okay, no problem, I'll leave this more. Uh, first and foremost. Um, um, you talk about a, a program we see, I, I do na Fritong. But now for them put this over, eh, AYV television, at least, because who they are na, who they watch. Most of twenty week, you show on there, we listen, I told you, I really don't know, can this thing. Really, if I less, um, eh, AYV radio show, for loss, but I know so, I don't talk, I know so, another two, zero one. I go in part, at least. So number two. Well, eh, that me on Fritong, me at the talent, thank you, I have one, it will look, it will look. Me if left for more angry, I know, I know, I let them pull us, I feel I want to push. For me, I let you on a push. Because do my, it look like eh, like man, not look, not, not look on any party, business. It really get plan for that country. They're going to be able. They're going to make you able to look, where you do, they will get the power and the strength. At least because I don't, I don't see back on our other many important thing in Fritong, with the, we, people in there, at least. And that boy, that boy back, he said, if I let them pull on the other Bomeo, they come on Fritong. Really, I had to talk to the government, with the listing, made them put on that area, they, the society, and the important thing that you, you, you do so. You come over by ferry, you come for waste zone, pass you pass the, the smoke, all that stuff, they all. Eh, you can get some stranger, they go na Fritong, for go see city, so man for work, for pass, for, for, for ina. You know, for the pass, you say that dirty day, that smoke, all in ten day. And the smoke, yeah, about, that area de, the dirty back, then pick, and all those, even if they show over eh, AYV, I really shame safe. You better let me look, and I'm getting, any, 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 me. We go watch, I'm at this, we see, oh, man, I see city ta. At least they will get the power and the strength. Then number three. Do ya, if you are listing. That was called talk yesterday, would be raised. We talked, we talked yesterday, I, I robot, I'm back small. That minister, that, that man at airport, that man, that manager, by the call, manager or the boss, he is. If you present really listing, that my father then pull up, you know, I might corrupt. You want count on problem, I'd have listed. Because like I know, we talk yesterday. Then people don't get a contract for me, that runway, that airport, I please, if you go begin talk back say, they will come make another eh, runway. Later, I go scatter, I baby. It's like a one play game for let the able eat some money. Um, but I trip reality, want to this corruption, that country, eh, she don't eh, really want, if I let anti-corruption, Fritong, the corruption, if let it Fritong. And the corruption, not just the government, sign them only do, even the people them back, the servants eh, the people in the country, they say corrupt. I watch AYV day for yesterday. Three days ago, I see one my talks eh, I don't know this local, a loggy knee. No, if not fish, all that things, they, they go getting, they put on a salon, where did they go? In the talks, in the person go down, you want the person go, I go to another country, you not fine. When the person go, you made them put a live fine, and the car of their life, but if you pray God for let person go up, you know, go tell well, this is a country, we, we born in a country we de. You know, see, not really nice, but they stop this, this corruption, that they, that they beat this, we are, I let it Fritong. How would you talk on this media eh, made it Fritong heavy, do ya please? If the man would de, before the corruption, yeah eh, do you are lay, lay with time process, they wait short process, not a long one, say. They wait short process, they Fritong heavy, they don't watch anybody, no sacred cow. Anybody can say hook, they hook up, they do it eh, who they be, they support. So then no more me, they say, then the other one, last one, I'm talk back, please, then doctor at that country, don't go. Me, the only doctor I know say, who get, when I, na, na doctor, not to fake, na doctor, Isatuka Kijalo. Whatever, say, anybody a doctor, this minister for education, doctor, who say, good doctor, I don't know, this is where the government, I say, a doctor, this is government, a doctor. Then doctor, I know, me also say the land, the, the, the land, and get the doc, the doctorate. So do you have, would they, would they big, they may they left, this doctor, let them put aside. Would that have been a Peter Brema, been a Peter Brema, Mrs. Jones, been a Mrs. Jones. Although they big, they may police doctor, I didn't doctor, I didn't count this corruption, that continue, with the big do ya. So, and I, I will stop you, so tell by going in fast today, I go bomb back, by going in, I let go, give me the health, eh, everybody, Inshallah. So, thank you ve- thank you, thank you very much for giving the platform.
Thank you very much, thank you, sir.
Okay.
PSG, yeah. Michael Cooka say, say, Tripulay, me problem with the land where the minister list to FCC. Why make you not give the land outright to the council? Since it go be good for the public. He saying, believe say, na three million, yes? For fifteen years, three million per year. Yes, Cola, you live on here, you name and who say the call from, please?
I mean, Koma, I recall from the majesty.
Yes, Koma, I get three minutes, sir.
Ah, you know, I know fully get the story, but you know, everyone knows eh, my mayor eh, uh, land minister. You see, the reason Tripulay, what you make, some of we be, we welcome the idea from that end local council and they run, uh, out of, out of, uh, political parties. All this business between, you know, the land minister and the mayor, my job, because you know, then belong to different, different party. If local council have been purely, you know, independent, trust me. That married go work so fine, it go work so fine, and when you watch, you know, the local council, it's like, ma dem, really, they were the people then, ma dem. Then, you know, their handwork, you know, is like, it is really reflects to the masses. So if they can really run, uh, out of, you know, uh, political parties. I believe say, you know, that will be very good start for we, maybe we time. We will come to the MPs and back. Because it's like, if MP didn't a parliament, you know, say, if they Allah this kind way, you know, in political party, you know, for peace eh. It work in the interest of the people eh. I'm not very much for saying, I just that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Koma. Yes, Cola, you live on here, you name and who say the call from, please?
Eh, Tripulay, what's up, what's happen yesterday, man, we never get. Yesterday, just on like, say, na social music, I please say, if you can get some technical issue. Anything what turn on, a music, 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 music.
Who be there yesterday, so say can't late, because Koma ya quick.
No. Oh, maybe so. Yes, but I want rock more, the problem here is between, I don't know how Sirion or out, then structure the constitution between the mayor and cabinet ministers, but I feel similar more, if this area where the minister, the, the brag say give the mayor. If that area, they, it is within the mayor and municipality. The area we give, because then they within that, the mayor and municipality. Because, I don't understand what in the go on, because the city na part of the government, right or wrong?
Right.
Okay, and if the city na part of the government, why the minister for lease land, act even have been private property, then I understand. Because yes, as if it happen, private individual, then they lease their property then to the city or the, or the, or the state. But if, 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 if not government property, why then the police come back to the city? With the all, they do the same thing, the same common goal, they all are the same government. It just that this managed city, that manage central government, unable wrapping it around that side, and also, maybe what in the minister, he try for talks in a state of the art, because And also, maybe what in the minister, he try for talks in a state of the art, because if you look that ferry junction. Well, they tell me believe free town grown up, that side did not be dead, you know, it not be dead, the first time with me. See, um, it kind of caught me in a surprise, I physically have not during the rebel war, then create that side, because me not be dead it. But the thing is that side did not structured for trinity. Because maybe within the traffic explaining, a side where they go build. Where it could give access to the truck, then where they come, or maybe they get equipment, then we go, we the truck, then turn equipment, and they machine them, we go to push like developing countries. You know, maybe not that in the trap or talks, the state of the art, but the, 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 the problem here is, the ministers, then Tubaku. You get the minister of land, you get economic and development planning, you get local council. And if everybody they talks say, they're all go for sign off before the mayor doing job. I don't know how, how far it go for take, maybe maybe make it take a set, a setback. Maybe now the people all they give you money, now they says, now they're all right, because that mayor, that minister are lying in line. You visit that minister, they just out of Eun, ain't just sit on no more. He say you, madam mayor, are they give you forty seven million leos discount? No, madam mayor go something for do standing. And madam mayor say, the people and where they give some loan money, get something for do. Either they send letter, or they talk to them, they warn them. He said, pass an on to a man. So I'm obviously that the mayor no more out of Eun wisdom, I just sit on no more, say, hey, today a good day, mayor. Take this fifty million years thing for, for three, three million. And the other thing where somebody been talk, just called, the last caller, we talk about. For local government, for go independent, I not got problem with that. But I not see any reason why members of parliament for go independent. Now, the only thing what they need for do, they need, just need for take that clause. They need for take that clause, we talks say, members of parliament get for answer to within a party, so once they take that clause and they take the clause out, say you not need symbol, as long as you not party member. You can stand, even they can make primaries, somebody we don't talk on before, let them make primary. If not twenty eight PC, now they stand at one constituency, they give them a primary. The one where we out of that twenty day, now they run against the S F P, because look, because in a, the general market for run back on today, whether we like it or not. But let them make primary, so that when the parliamentarian cannot parliament. Whether he, he, he support impatrio, you not supporting impatrio, they not go get empowered, they do, what they use for most of them, because it happen now, you know, yesterday we just see a plain blank of it. Where almost more than half of, only eh 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 eh. That crazy guy within our Texas, w- 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 without keep forgetting his name, another seven cabal. But everybody has, eh, all the other senators, including the head of the senate, the head of the young party. When I did the McConnell, they all vote against the young party, say no, Trump, we need to go with you this time around, we the move. Because would this not, you know, safe, and not healthy. And you see where eh 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 Republicans, it's not they. Boku of them, what's about, this not good. Even though you know we party, you know, we president, but not good, we let it go with you. And nothing not go for happen to them. So now there's structures, and they, they need for change. They just need for change, where APC parliamentarian good to nap. He argue for anything where APC they in favor, where in believe say, eh, not good, he argue. APC not come after them, same thing with S F P, just like what in them do to this tower guy. Now, I reset, I don't move, I'm back, back to, the next thing where I reset, in chair, I did by the toilet, then boom, now do. Now that they need for change, but instead of, me believe, I want let them all the under party. But let them restructure the constitution, where they go get power, they're not afraid for boot. We boot in time come, or speak against the young party, when they see things go wrong. Now that not me no more, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Omar. Because I see um Mamadou, he saying that three years now, for more than they say transform free town. Free town not great for transform. Alright, so the one the way be the ask Jason say, oh, now almost three years, or, what in, what in the mayor don't do? So now the mayor, I ain't get problem now, yeah? And the mayor get problem now, yeah? On a we free Tonyans them. Hmm? Free town city council, then go get the lapses. At least, make go give them, them credit, and they do, what in them things say, then go able for get the people them on board for clean the city. But we people them. You, the, the one where I talk on air the other times say, we people them so, I don't know. Always where, even when people then snap, at a clean drawer, they see like plastic paper there around dirty, like it's so common. They not even, I don't know, I don't know. They, I really not even know how for express them, I don't know how for talk them. Because at least, they for able for things say, this dirty, eh, not fine now, yeah? But then go sit down, dirty go, did it? Look the other man where they argue say, now I'm picking to wear and just know. If they picking to wear, you see, and why you not tell Ali pick candy? Eh, if not true. Then look the, the, I don't even know, the toilet facilities. They big ghost there. With crowded people. Look the toilet facility there. Not even good for, for even, I don't know, man. What's wrong with our people? Eh? What's wrong with we people there? We, man, they argue back, look that part. That part they forcing they deny say, in things say, the next door. The next door, then toilet connect with the young. Hey, for bad. He say the next door, in things say, then toilet connect with the young. Eh? Then the other man, he say, not to use, now you have use. He say now you have use. Flimsy excuses. But how can you live like that? How can you? Eh? I don't know if, I mean, because that business say, yeah, because once I where I see, I see the Metropolitan Police then say. Then left warning yesterday, then they go today, but then be telling, I think it is then they take. But even at that, not to even excuse, where they can, they say, we not clean, we not got, why not clean now? Eh? Why they not clean now? You de sell there, now they do, do business. But you know one for clean. Eh? You know one for clean, what's wrong with us and cleaning? What's wrong with we for paint, for make nice, what's wrong with we? If we they take care of, we body them. If we they take care of, of, say, we want make change, 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 Saloman, they say, ah, Saloman, now they bluff today, they say that. What about us, how they lay we here today? What about us, how they lay we here today? Why we not want for make replace present table? Don't give me that poverty thing, oh. Not give me the poverty thing. Because poverty, not when they stop you not for sweep. Poverty, not when they stop you not for clean gutter. Poverty, not when they stop you, you, if you can wash, why you not go get water, and to go outside water on for there, and all those things. So it has nothing to do with poverty. Eh? You get nothing for do with poverty. Some people won't like it. But me, I think some people should not be in the city. Ah. Some people not for dinner at the city. Because with twenty, they see so, why do you want to live in the city? Eh? Why? This other one, I don't know if now a tactic for make the tenant them, put time behind the landlord them. Because if they come, they not meet landlord. If they can, they not meet landlord, you the tenant, now you then go with. And that, that one they good. Because, look at all the mother, I seen that the landlord, now he for do that. If you not say city council, we can not meeting landlord, now you they go with. Ay. You know say they go. You know then they, you say safe they go. Eh? But how long ago they pan this? Abdul, they ask, he say, what in the number, now four, four, eight, eight. Now four, four, eight, eight, I think. Make a cross check again. But not to toll free, oh, he they pay for call. He they report, if your neighbor, you they drop, if your neighbor in place they smell, he they call, you report. This is not the best time for snitch. Because we want free town city in clean one. Eh? We want a clean one, if you not see, that smell, the way they come over your neighbor, you see, just call no more. No need for call your name, just call you give the address, then they go there. Then they go there, then go check him out. Because this eh, one pass mark now pan we. One pass mark pan we. Some people won't be happy, but some people should not be in the city. Some people not for dinner in a city. Or some people not for own property in a the city, if you can't take care of it. If you not able to take care of him, my dear. Then trust me, you not for own him. Ah. Because we just, we just here now. I say best time to snitch in Sierra Leone. If you not see your neighbor dirty, report him. Call the number. Report. Report and say, eh, and I look like if I say, and toilet overflow, eh, not green tear. But again, are we back? Now who they cover? Look the other lady where they meet, eh, no see, they not empty it, we they lie back. He say they don't empty it. Why? Now, I will be start with, and say, Free Town City Council go begin fine five hundred thousand leons to people them. People them again, money no day, they said, then they find people then for dirty, this, well, now we don't see. So who now will be feel to say, Free Town City Council be wrong at that time? For say, then they five, oh, fine up to five hundred thousand leons. With this episode, one no more we don't watch. What in I you take? You still stand by what you be think today? Say, Free Town City Council, the money, too many people, they not get money, now Free Town City Council, they can't say that they find people then for dirty. Who do have for cleaning dirty for you? They make her easy. If you not say, eh, because then they say, oh, well, if you don't clean your gutter, then the other person, you don't come on there. Well, there is a number, you call and report them before council they come to you. Now you first go call. Call, then go come, you watch, you gotta say, me, every day, they clean me gutter. But look, oh, over there, always the need they clean, and then dirty they can, and then they to do dirty. Eh? So, my kaka say, say, triple A, why the FCC for tell them for clean inside, and they sell and sleep, disgusting, exactly? That's why I say, some people not for own property at the city, some people not for tapping at the city. Because you are not worth being there. Hmm? You are not worth being there. Yeah, 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 I also say, maybe, if the powers that be, eh, then build up line, some people might go back. Uh since then they in a town, well. And here we day. And here we day. Issa managed to ask, do we have correct addresses in Sierra Leone? Yes, we do. Unless, if you see not get correct address, we question, who say you do? But salon get address. Salon get address. If you not get, there is a question. Eh? There is a question, if you not get. And so me feel oh. Abakabai, they ask, say, what about them people who they bond dirty, ah. Me, I don't talk on air. Those people, they not, they can't make I enjoy breeze now, Veranda. I make this morning from Ward C, now ninety eight point one, where the pussy way be did it, they talk, they bump, bump, talk there. I was like, man, now ninety eight someone I go go, and I go talk. Because me tap now Ward C. And I go, I go, I go fall to now, and every, and whenever I come in contact with council worker, we can knock that me the most. They always no see, I get a conversation with them. Me, I always they put complain. Whenever, even when I go in at the office, I they put complaint there. But to be there in a ninety eight this morning, they talk. What in they collect, what in they not collect, what in they do, they road for go on a council first, they no make a. They road for go on a council. They not make a. Look at the road bad. The same council where they collect money. Then you would, they no make a, so what do you expect? Let them make their road first. Where they don't make their road run, then I know say they already for make Ward C. But without that, that ain't sabi talk. That ain't lie, lie, let them just skip on to themselves. Let them just skip on there. Eh? With all the, even in free town. You get an apple, then say, find me in free town. Find me in free town, there is an app. Where, yeah, now, you they see you can say law. You see, everybody where present for you, even the one who they to way you dirty, you they see then they. Their numbers, then they do, where you go call directly, the person, you get, yeah, they get say, oh, me, now social, so I do. There, I go, they can't pick me dirty. And get tall and you, we now what see, we not get ah. We not get ah. But then they back, the mayor on back, then go for, not to afternoon no more, then they take na net. From up, Kissi Road or the force, then they bond dirty. After midnight. From Kissi Road, well, if you see reach now up gone. Take go for mile, now dirty burning. But if you say the mayor, you, now oh, who bridge it up. So what in the one they need to do, and now we don't end, nothing. Me be feel to say, they find me, now for every say oh. That's why I put on the, app no be find me, say, who's ah, they. I say, but I say, when I not try oh. But again, why we don't no go just join the one then they? Eh? Why we don't go just join there? So you know what in, let who say join. The mayor don't do good thing, find me in free town, who say, you put find me, who say you do? Find me in Houston, find me in Godrich, find me whatever. Although the one they name now, find me in free town, who say now part of free town? Eh? Find me, find me. Who not able find who say. Other time, I, 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 me, I don't make. Other time, I, 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 me, I don't make complaint to council workers, the work and I mean the most. I say that dirty within they burn, I don't like it. And the dirty, huh? They assist, it Alex say, now me on compound, now he like. Oh, you see the big skin count, and ziggy 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 ziggy, I like they don't clean. You can't get that back. I'm like, why? Then the smell. Why? It's so common, but we trying it for pay the council money. Huh? And sabi you the most. Me, me on the most, they not sabi good for go left. They, the man don't notice oh. They not sabi, they no goodie. But they sabi for go now the the most. For go knock, for go check if you don't pay. And sabi? They would. Eh? Now who they make a? How they make the road? When you come, you poor. Other people then they build, they know they make the road. Eh? Me, eh, eh, Tony, now neighbour. If me no make, Tony they make, if Tony no make, me they make. And so who they make the road no more? Because now who they get for the guy have go now us? By the time when they come on the road dumb bad, where me go, I get for go make. By the time I come on the road dumb bad, where in go, I get for go make. And so who do you? How long pan that? But I go vex, who say, because what thing, the council you would, you no make. Me, the council road force, I no like for past the, eh, man. Eh, the council in road. Me no like for past the force. Eh? I no like for past you, because what thing do? You not correct. It jagga jagga past the other road there, before that I can take one long road, I go past the, just for balance the short one way they before me. Because you not fine. But what thing can for collect the money? You better ready to pay. Right until the new year I don't start. Me, as the new year I start, I making send go ask for the demand notice. Pay them and forget bottom. So by the time we then they can have, can knock the money, then can check, they never left paper oh. Can't check for what thing, just a shit and say who don't pay. Well, now this way they go through now Ward C, but not to Ward C, who they talk today, who they talk about Free Town. The central business district. But I can't wait, I don't know, now they why I didn't see, I, I they wait for the, let them go Abacha. Heh, heh. Eh, Abacha, you think say he go walk? Eh? You feel say he go walk, let them go Abacha? Or if you say Abacha again, you on game, then they, they not go Ebola. So let them just forget about Abacha you on say. Eh? Abacha for go be road, Kisi Road. Slab they not complete, here for work a middle road. Ay. And you can't say you they left from cutting Tigi area. You want come up gone, or you want go now Wataki. Eh? Eh, you not pass here now. Ah. You not possible. Something then they, it's sad. We would didn't end then they, the thing they will can pass for can at all. Sometimes I, I, me, I prefer I go round. I prefer I go round. Then I like, and say, say me then go doff cut me then go clean the road. Man, that road, it don't damage. That road don't damage, oh my god, I don't know, maybe, I'll try to see, eh? The next time where this alone, maybe, or Sunday, not possible, even though they say Sunday, eh? For now twelve o'clock to five o'clock then for sale, forget it, then any they walk. And so market they full up back. Because I'm just thinking, who's the way for drive through guard streets, come Egan Street, come boss now eastern police? Let we get them on video, make we show people, that road they force, it don't damage, they, it don't damage. Mortal man then, and they damage the road. Mortal man there. Eh? Abdul say, you say, the reason why people then they build fine house, then they not make the road now, because most of them are thief money, then they take bill, they use them, eh, Abdul? Eh? Eh, so now, so you see him. Say the reason why make people then they build fine house, then they know they make the road now, because the most of them, okay, you say most of them. But who that for make road? Who that for make road? Now, the problem this way make the city not plan. Because yes, the surveyor go come, he survey. He will tell you say, the twelve feet there, the road there and whatever. But because the city, the council, not the team map by road business, now make you go fear not see, some places then they, who say road for they, person no go build they. Because before person build, then for don't show and say, yeah, now the road, you know for build now, yeah. Hmm? But because we road now just nothing. I remember for, for me first, the first thing I ask. The place, who say the land eh, accessible, then say yes. Hmm, I say, okay, that's fine. After that, I say, until Motoka they go there, then say yes. Okay. Make I explain give you me own now, yeah? The land, I, I don't even know how to explain, eh, long. So the person, he split the land two. Yeah? Me and me the bien. Then front the. Okay? Instead of selling the entire land, he split and two. He sell bien, he hold front. Second, not a problem. Who they don't, they go, and then they go, always at the act say, I hope say Motoka the drive go there, say yes. So the latter part now, I say, what the driveway for go inside? The person we sell the land say, he say now in land. So me for buy the land from him, if I want for drive Motoka go inside. I say, eh, who say you see one day? House go there, you not get access road for go inside. You tell me say, I for pass now other person in your land, in your house, like he had the road for go inside to me. You don't want this here? I say, no, you not possible, and now they buy her? I make now the first, the first thing I ask say, is it motorable, then say yes. You now you cut her, you say me and me the bien, that's fine, me, I don't mind. And they bien eh, okay, so how they go inside? At the end of the day, eh, agree, we cut it twelve feet. Cut it twelve feet for get, for make him the driveway. Hold on, cut her now, the south side left for her now, eh, not better again. Ah. You not left for I again oh. So at the end of the day, what you get for do, let me get for end up buy and back. I was like, why you even strain me? Wait for yourself from be and take and front. Eh? But no. It be the friend we. And the funny thing now, the access roadway they take go boss to the other street. Other person come back, he can't build they. He can't build now the access road. Ah, man, no get problem. So me and me now the last lap, who reach to me, you can inside. We want cross to her now, well, road no there, because now the road, he don't build. Though the, the friend back say not to road that they. Heh, 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 oh, thank god. He say not to road, not to road that they. I ain't no go be road, where the road start from the other intersection, it drive take inside. I say, eh, me, and then they pass there, as long as I get road for can inside to me, I get road for come out. So I have no problem with that. The one then we get for bill after her. Now then get for friend road now, because who say he don't put so now, now the road, now the safe, 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 he build. Eh? Park no there the. Community centre no there, it's a new developing area, but what thing is supposed for do, then for don't get everything. Eh? Hi. Triple A, if the house owners are paying house tax, or paying tax on the rent they collect, it is not the council's responsibility to empty the septic tanks for them, or makes it cheaper for them to empty the, nobody know, Junissa, nobody know say now council for empty tax, empty seven, who say cancelling connect? Council eh, go check, if you know empty, and then give you paper, three days, then can, if you still not empty, and they arrest you. So nobody know they say house owners eh, council now for empty septic tank oh, no. My different here be the talk about now, yeah. I was just like, say, say, triple A, I get a friend, where they go through the same thing where you just talk so. Make a cook, I say, for do, I'm one Muslim, I live the way, Boko market people, I'm not a seller, yeah. And what I talk to you, I just begin things say, when, when, I really need for pass now that, will we take him from either clientele? Yeah, we take him from clientele and drive through, take go boss now eastern police, when who they take on the guard street road. That road don't bad, it don't bad off, man. Because I pass the, this last, I pass the one there, but I net, even I net for passing that trouble, because the road, the dirty, I, I, I don't know. Ah. I also say, he say the leaders, they would only this country from independence to now poor salon, the damage way they don't do, now they continue for do. He say the word now humongous. And the word is that too, by the damage. And the people, the people, the people, just like I explain this one now for the access road, the people, just like how you watch for the one, the way she dump a dirty, where they argue, we get disgusting toilet system, then, now they back, then they leave, now they then they eat, hey! How do you do that? Eh? How? So, I'm, like I said, not to poverty oh. Ah. Not to poor say for make you dirty, not to poor say for make you live wretched, no! How many times then people, you know, we all get the stories then. I like now one shot or two shot you get, we come, you they booker, you hang gum, you, you eye and I find the next day, you make back, you make change, change, nobody near they know. So now the same way we need for take care of who's how they lay, we head there. Eh? Houses them oh, they know they paint. They know they paint. You want to, you show person not get thing for it now, thing for painting, okay, but you they pay rent oh. Eh? You know the payment? Before, before, eh, when they say Christmas, when they say December, you they see the host then they paint. You they see who that they change mat, who that everybody they do something. I don't say people then go cancel money, no, they not poverty, no! How the, how the leaders then get the priority wrong, now so we back the people and give priorities then wrong. And so who gets there? Eh? Some of the phone then where people in own now salon, trust me, you didn't ask if you no get her. Where they call you, they can't phone, oh, then they tell you say they want. I'm like, me, me, oh, then I have for smear, I no get their phone there. Ah. They will do any and everything for all them phone them, for all them gadgets then they. Any and everything, you name it, they are ready to do it. But now say for be. Eh? Who say you do, you know for take care of they? Who say you do for represent you? Woman say, say, if now the case done there, why would they worry about their health? If they not care about their own health? Abba Kabai say, say, typically, why would they pay property tax? Now for their amenities then they oh, but we are not getting it. And then they chase we back for pay. Nothing the council, I'm not talking about Free Town or something, they do something, I mean, not sabi. But not, you know, the who say me there, when they run out of for pay council tax, where be say, they get something, when they provide. Eh? Junissa Bangla back there, she say, then what thing the council they do with the house owners, then money, when they pay? He say the people are dirty, but the council forgive a hand as well, when are they un-council, he give so. We not clean, then go with you. I, I, I don't think say can, council for be responsible for clean you, no, I don't think so. Hmm? They should be responsible for clean outside and they and develop a healthy living space. Now, they say, say, eh, they suggest for make government ban box toilet now Free Town, or even say for now the whole country. And then for put strong measures on them landlord there, and then land lady there. For make them take care of their houses them. Make a cook, I say, say, triple A, people eh, then on coach on most of their access roads them, then, then tear. Because once land give you permit for build, then they do inspection, that is true. He say no for a fact, because he not go through this. And that's, just like I explain me own now. There is another case, then now upside, up to we there. They say this J C and this policeman, now, what, what thing they say now they explain oh, ah, then, then no can say just no. They say this J C and this policeman, they meet up now this place. The policeman, he gets land for enter inside to the J C. The J C people they don't build on, they not consider about access road. Ah. They not consider about access road at all, but they don't build on. Okay? Now eh, the J C ask now say, what the access road? And they say, oh, one land they before we oh, but the man say for buy a nayan. But not to that man they they buy from, not like mine, not to that man they they buy from. The man say for buy a nayan, I own. And the J C say, ah, and then they buy, and then they buy, me better, me own it in at the same person. Me own anything at the same person, so we be able to fight them, because now he say, give me, ah, ah, so I need to buy, I need to buy, you know what the man do? I say, the man, he say, ah, the land be the first empty one. The land be the empty one, whether they make much, then begin go back and forth, back and forth. But then they not be, the J C not be this alone. And the man say, bill, he billows the, bits block, cement block, now he billows the. I don't know say how they pass through that case there. How they pass, how they not pass, I don't know how they end up. Hmm? Okay. Local effort, I just know. I also say, say, majority of the people not get sense of responsibility, then they take and they mix up all, and make them fine. Like yolk and egg with literacy, illiteracy. I about to kick, I say, you say, they need for relocate people out of free town, the city is too congested and unsafe. Peace and blessings to you, Nancy Barry. Triple A, I get property in a Godgidge area, I pay property tax every year, but me brother. If you see the road, we it terrible, ah, I just explain me own I just know, sir. But come on, sir, I say, you say, then clean. Who's side, then go dispose of the waste. Okay, fair question. Well, then get people them with tricycle, where they collect dirty. I just explain I just now say, inside freedom, then get what in they call, find me in free town, there is an app. That app, the way you put her, the person where you responsible for collect dirty na here, in telephone and in name, they did. You de call him, say, now social address are there, and if you can collect me dirty. You go there, part of your list now, where anytime, you go, they can there, you go collect you dirty. So notice for say, place not for throw the waste to, no, they have. My cook I say, he say, in fact, triple A, when you apply for billing permit, as long as you submit the plan, pay the fee. And grease the palms of the workers them, ah, you good to go. Junissa Bangla say, say, regarding the access road, Kenema is, yes, I, I don't know if you don't watch me. Video from boat to Kenema. Kenema is well planned. Because even though the car will be the use very low, be careful suffer me, you know, sir. But we be get opportunity for get a dispatch, okay, the rider for show who's how be the go. And the okay, the rider for guessing a car who they use, you would the way pass where. But road, then they access road, they, the houses, then they far from the street in Kenema. Yes, then get slum, because we visited the slum. And this year, by God power, one for visit the north, we don't do the south. Last year, this year, I did not to one for visit. Hmm? And you see, I say, you say, then get two phones. Why we now, yeah? Now, one we get. Ah. Junissa say, what about empty, yes, people in the way they empty. Oh, then night soil menu, soil again, say for empty, like how they may they do today, who's side? How most people in South Africa get yard, yard not there again, because any side way, then they build something there. But then get the septic tank then, then get, Freedom City Council now, they promote, say, call the no more, you don't fool, then they give you number. You de call the number, you pay the people, then come, they can clear. Now, since I say, you say, the province is well planned. Yes, Franco just say, you good, then get app for collect waste, they do. What on a free publicity, I don't give them so today, eh? You think saying a free publicity, I don't give Freedom City Council today, okay, we give them, it's in the mayor in back today. At least we serve do for, for, we give the mayor in back today. Because Baku people not be know what in they go on, but, I don't able for explain to people, this episode one, we don't see, you know? We don't get to understanding. Eh? At least. We all learn something. So we would communicate with people back home, eh, me, huh, I know. Uh, me, person they tell me safe, ah. But me, I still team up, who's I team up? For say so man, not for the na the city, who's I forgot, I don't know, but not to the city. Tomorrow, we will get, we first. Good old days. Inside twenty twenty one. We'll get the first good old days inside twenty twenty one. And na the new year, you own. Now they carry it. The new year, I own. And I believe say. Any kind way, we go again and see in voice tomorrow. We will get the good old days, the first one, for twenty twenty one. Go there back tomorrow. Till we meet again, Tiki Police, ta ta.